I'm going to introduce the city council candidates for you. First, we'll go down the road. George Carr. Mayor, is that what I'm saying that right? Mayor Cohen.
You're saying it right.
Alec Isaacson. Josh Lemins. And Eric Sinenberg. Right? Sinenberg? Oh, okay, right. You better make sure your mics, you know how to turn them on and off, I'm sure. All right, we're going to start with introductory statements. Uh, George, you may go first, Mr. Carr.
Thank you very much.
You get two, two minutes each.
I'm George Carr, and I appreciate the opportunity to explain why I'm the best candidate for city council. I love Beechwood. I respect the history that has made Beechwood one of the best places to live in Ohio. And I have the right skills and the right approach to make Beechwood even better. My wife, Lily, and I moved to Beechwood with our newborn daughter, and she's now a sophomore at Beechwood High School. Our younger daughter is in second grade at Brighton. And our whole family recognizes that the school system is valued to our community, our reputation, and our future. Beechwood schools do not just educate our children, but ask more of them. To be entrepreneurs, to be volunteers, to be good neighbors, to be good citizens. I ask that same more of myself, and I bring that same philosophy to my candidacy for city council. I've spent 23 years as a lawyer for other cities and for private clients. And I've won many lawsuits and closed many deals, but that's not enough. I've also been an entrepreneur by growing my law firm. I've been a volunteer by assisting people who can't pay for the legal help they really need. A good neighbor by speaking and writing about how the law can be better. And a good citizen by supporting worthwhile public projects and candidates. That work has earned me multiple terms as president of the Beechwood Democratic Ward Club, where I presided over its largest membership move in history, and helped to elect many of Beechwood's current officers. Beechwood is already one of the best and best governed communities in Ohio. And I am the best candidate to help keep it that way. I have strong and trusting relationships with our politicians, with my fellow residents. I've served on the Beechwood Charter Review Commission and other public capacities. I have corporate and test experience in distilling complicated issues down to their key points and finding the common ground between people who don't agree. And I have the independent judgment to disagree with even my most trusted colleagues and the energy to look for creative solutions to stubborn problems. It won't be easy to make Beechwood a better place than it already is. But I am committed to this improvement. I'm more skilled and experienced than any of my challengers, and I believe in Beechwood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Firstly, um, I am vaccinated and I have a negative test as of three days ago, so if you don't pull up.
Well, while you're at the mic, you can take your mask off.
Secondly, I'm honored to be here amongst these, um, wonderful gentlemen. It's a stiff competition, no doubt. Uh, but I can tell you that being in the women's league here, I grew up with five sisters, so I always close the toilet. It's automatic. And also, I'll tell you what, I didn't write a speech.
Just tell us why you're running.
I didn't write a speech, I'm gonna tell you why I'm running. Running because I believe in common sense. I believe that people need the change of common sense. Not the same old, same old. With respect to everyone on council, it's just a boring same old, same old, and that's gotta change. And what's gotta change about it is spend money like it's your own money. I started working when I was 12 years old. I spend money like it's my money. Spending money like it's someone else's money on things we don't need, that's not about me. Common sense means make sure the meat and potatoes are there, make sure the bread and butter's there before you get a big chocolate cake. Make sure that people at Beechwood are taken care of with their basic necessities before we start spending on things we don't need. And I don't need another minute. I've said what I have to say.
Uh, what would you say on meat and potatoes? You're talking garbage pickup, road surfacing? I mean, what is, since you've had a little more time?
I would say yes, garbage pickup is wonderful in Beechwood. The police, the fire, wonderful. The flooding in people's houses that I've come across over and over again, not so wonderful. The lack of street lights so people break their wrists tripping over the sidewalk, can't walk the street. We're supposed to be a walkable, friendly street. We're not friendly. It's pitch black out there.
Okay. Got some details there. And what did I, oh, this is Mr. Isaacson, right?
That's me, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Are we good? Do you hear me okay? Good. I am Alec Isaacson, and I am positively Beechwood. Our city has grown over the past eight years. We've added 4,000 new residents and many new businesses. We have a strong financial position and a growing vibrant community. I helped us to get there. Among other things, I oversaw an overhaul of our city's zoning code, which made it easier for us to attract new businesses. And I drove creation of strategic plans that clearly and transparently map our priorities and path forward. I want to keep building on that foundation of strength. We all love Beechwood. We've all worked hard to serve it, but that's not enough. We need, we need leadership with experience and vision. Here are the concrete things I want to do for our community if you help me to earn another term on city council. First, I want to invest in improving our community. Among other things, that means putting up streetlights and sidewalks in the neighborhoods that want them. It means creating a comprehensive plan for recreation facilities. And it means addressing stormwater runoff concerns. Second, I want to improve our safety and security. That means stopping the people who are cutting through and speeding on our residential streets. It means helping them all. And it means recognizing and countering new threats to our community, including the national rise in antisemitism and hate crimes. For Beechwood Place in particular, this doesn't mean that radical steps are needed. We've already changed the mall's zoning to allow offices, hotels, and apartments. We need to keep working with the mall's ownership to share ideas and create incentives so the mall and our other businesses can evolve with the times. By actually doing these things, we will continue to have a strong, vibrant city with low taxes, great city services, and excellent schools. We will continue to be a welcoming and growing community. To do that, I need your vote to continue serving on our city council. I am Alec Isaacson, and I am positively Beechwood. Thank you.
Thank you. I failed to mention that Mr. Isaacson and Mr. Sinenberg are incumbents on council. The next to speak is Mr. Mince, who's in a very unusual situation. He is currently on the school board but has chosen to run for city council. So you might explain that in your two minutes, too.
Good evening. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Beechwood PTO, and the American Association of University Women for hosting this candidates forum. It is an honor and privilege to speak with you this evening about my experience, my views, and vision for Beechwood's future. For the past 10 years, I've had the honor and privilege to serve on the Beechwood school. In this role, I've worked with students, families, district staff, school leaders, local businesses, and residents to ensure that our children have access to the best education. Our children are fortunate to attend schools which are filled with amazing teachers, incredible support staff, and innovative leadership that strives to achieve excellence in providing education to our kids. Today, I ask for your vote and support for the Beechwood City Council. I have a passion for serving our community. If elected, I will continue to apply my hands-on approach to solving problems and continue to be a common sense voice that represents your needs accordingly, as well as continuing to honor the Beechwood values and traditions. The city of Beechwood is facing new and major challenges. I will work with all citizens, the administration, business owners, and leaders on redevelopment, stability, safety, so that assets like Beechwood Place are safe and a priority. My business experience and background will aid the city and administration in three categories: safety, economic development, and strategic partnerships. I will prioritize safety and security for all of our residents, religious institutions, and those visiting our community. The Beechwood community demands excellence in our city, our schools, and our community at large. Let me be clear, I am fully committed to our city and its residents. I will dedicate myself to keeping our resources superior. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sinenberg?
Thank you. My name is Eric Sinenberg, and it's a privilege and honor to be here tonight as one of your Beechwood city councilmen. I'd love to be able to have the opportunity to continue to serve the city on council over the next four years. I want to thank my family first and foremost for allowing me to serve and to run for council this year. My wife, Jamie, and the sons, Ari, Noah, and Asher, who I believe are home watching this, really have made the sacrifice in allowing me to serve and run for office this year, and I thank you all. And of course, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the PTO and the American Association of University Women for cosponsoring tonight's event. This is a really important and valuable public service that you provide along with the voter guide that you produce that's online. And thank you for taking that, the opportunity to allow us to speak here tonight. As I mentioned, it's a privilege and honor to serve Beechwood. I am proud to be here as a results-oriented, consensus-building, service-oriented councilman. I enjoy a good working relationship with my colleagues, the school board, the administration, and all of our employees. I'm responsive to residents whenever they call me. And I try hard to serve our diverse community. My campaign slogan is passion, vision, and commitment. And I always serve with passion, have a true vision for what Beechwood can be in the future, and I'm committed to our community. I'm running for reelection on my record of accomplishments over the last four years. First and foremost, I have been a reliable vote for our safety forces and our public works department, which are the cornerstones of Beechwood. I've been accessible and in the community as much as I can be with COVID. Part of this is I've led the effort on city council to go into our schools and connect with our students. I've gone into third grade, middle school, and the high school. And I've led, uh, the climate, I partnered with the Climate Action Team to work on climate change in the high school. Thank you.
I don't think I, we, we got a lot of questions in over the past week, and I, a countless number, you can imagine what the very first subject was people brought up. Can you? Beechwood Place. Various things about Beechwood Place. I'm gonna start at your end, um, Mr. Sinenberg, and just ask you about, well, there's concern about crime. There's concern about, um, whether people feel safe shopping. There's a concern about empty storefronts. And there's also ideas out there about any kind of mixed-use development that might be done at the mall or what could be improved, and how is our relation, your relationship with the owner of the mall? So would you like to just cover them all as much as you can in a minute?
Sure. So, the Beechwood Place bashing has to stop. Beechwood Place is an A-rated mall. Certainly, the retail environment has changed throughout our country and internationally, and COVID hasn't helped. And, um, shopping is challenging right now, and shopping centers are facing challenges. But Beechwood Place remains one of the crown jewels of our community. As I said, it's an A-rated mall. We have three great department stores. There are a lot of great, uh, other stores, great food court. And, um, again, we have challenges, we've had crime there. The criminal element has and will always continue to gravitate towards shopping centers and malls and create issues. There's no doubt about it, but the Beechwood Place bashing really needs to stop. It's a great facility, and it's continued to be. And thanks to what I've done on council with my colleagues and with the administration, we've created an environment changing the zoning to mixed use. Actually, all of our commercial districts are now available and ready to be redeveloped on a mixed-use basis.
Including Beechwood Place?
Including Beechwood Place. And of course, I want it to be redeveloped and remain even more viable in the future. But it is certainly a viable mall.
Thank you. Mr. Mince, would you like to talk about that?
I think we need to be proactive with the mall. 25% of malls, they say, are gonna close in the next three to five years. We have definitely seen changes already with our mall. And a lot of people don't want to go there because they don't feel safe. I think we need to put together a group of individuals who have the experience. We have a lot of those individuals in our community. Whether they are working in our community and have something to lose if something happens to the mall, or they are residents and they are national, you know, commercial real estate, um, individuals. And I think we need to put a group together, and we need to form a plan, because we know Beechwood better than anyone. So, if we can then put together a plan and figure out an approach, we can go to them. And we're gonna have a lot better chance of being successful with our mall than waiting for them to come to us.
Thank you. Alec, you've been on council, you've probably heard these questions.
I have heard these questions, and frankly, we're doing this stuff already. We have an acknowledged expert on the city staff, one of the original architects of the mall itself, who understands the business top to bottom. The city and the mall are collaborating very tightly.
Could you just speak a little closer to the mall?
Sure. The city and the mall are collaborating very tightly to make sure that when they, when they have ideas, that we are prepared to help them implement them. When we have ideas, they're prepared to listen. That's the first part. Now let's talk about safety. People say the mall is unsafe, and there is the perception of that. But the numbers don't necessarily bear it out. If you look at calls for service for Beechwood Place, that's the number of times that people have called and firemen or police have been dispatched. That number has remained flat since 2017. It actually dropped in 2019 and 2020, but we can blame that on COVID. The top three types of crimes at the mall? Drug, shoplifting, drug possession, DUI. Meanwhile, there are shootings at Cocker Park, shootings at Polaris. There are, and there's also been a riot in a nearby mall over the summer. These things happen, but our mall is pretty safe.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Probably about 90-plus percent of the houses that I stopped in on my campaign, there, there's a lot. The women of the household, generally women shop malls more than men, just a fact. They say to me, I don't go to the mall anymore. And that's sad, because it is the crown jewel of Beechwood Place. Five years ago, a good friend of mine in the Beechwood Police Department told me, "Do not send your family to the mall after 2 o'clock." And I didn't believe it, it's the crown jewel of Beechwood Place. There's definitely a problem, whether, like Alec said, it's perceived, or like Eric said, it's really not there. There's a problem. In discussing with a good friend of mine who is a developer, um, the issue of the mall, somebody said, "Well, we've been trying to get a hold of the owners, and we can't." He looked at me and said, "My best friend is an owner of the mall, and no one has contacted him."
Okay, Mr. Carr?
I'd love to add to the incumbents. I think that the relationship between the city and the mall management is quite strong. I think there's a lot of open communication. I think the city's been responsive to the mall owners' concerns and vice versa. I think the city has been proactive in both taking the lead in the zoning changes and in suggesting improvements to security such as license plate readers and facial recognition and other kinds of technological resources that the mall owners have taken advantage of. And I think that the perception that the, that the Beechwood Place Mall is somehow on the verge of some drastic change or is on the, on the cusp of failure is just incorrect. And I think obviously the city, uh, benefits greatly from the mall and has a strong interest in supporting the mall. I'll continue that tradition, but I see no need for drastic change in the relationship between the city and the mall. I think it's working fine.
Thank you. I'm gonna start with Mr. Mince on this one, because it's a question that involves the schools as well. There's a proposal, I understand, to, for the city to fund a universal pre-K in Beechwood. Is this, uh, something that the city is talking about? Have they talked to the school board about it? Tell us what's going on with that. I know that there's a county program involving this as well.
So there is a proposal. There's a meeting on Thursday with the city council and our administration.
Oh, wait, you mean the school board, the administration, and the city council?
The superintendent, and the treasurer of Beechwood Schools, and the city council. Uh, the school board will not be present, as it has not come to the board yet for discussion. It's something that, I consider that a want. I think Beechwood right now is under leads. And this could be an expenditure that could cost a million dollars a year. And I think there's a lot of other ways that the city could spend money right now.
Is there anyone else who would like to talk about universal pre-K? Okay, go for it. This is Mr. Isaacson.
So, yes, this is something that we have been exploring as a council. It is an interesting idea, but it is certainly not a done deal. And it is not a, um, it is something that we still need to explore. We need to work out all the details, the finances, the cost and the benefits to our city. Is it, could it be a key differentiator for Beechwood? Yes. Could it bring more people here? Yes. Could the cost spiral out of control? Yes. And it's going to. We need to be careful not to start a program like that. That's why we're exploring these things. It's been important to me as a member of council to, when we, as we talk about new plans for the city, to talk about them openly, to talk about them in public, so that we can hear what the community says and we can adjust. We are representatives of the community, and we don't listen to the community. We ignore the community's desires at our peril.
Eric, would you like to talk about that, too? You understand that, please.
Yes, thank you. So, cities are the, one of my favorite quotes about cities is that cities are the laboratories of ideas. This is just an idea at this point. And we wouldn't be doing our job as city council members if we didn't explore different ideas and have meetings and discuss them. So, unfortunately, this idea has been attacked by some in the community as, to the point where the discussion isn't, to the, to the point where some people don't want to even discuss it. So I think it should absolutely be discussed to attract and attract new families to Beechwood. Although frankly, we don't necessarily need that. We have families that want to be here really badly. If anything, we should be working on the, not the demand side, but on the supply side, and building new homes. And I have plenty of ideas there, including the Chagrin Corridor, putting up, uh, where there's old, uh, in, office buildings, putting up new townhomes. But in any event, um, this is just an idea, we're exploring it now. And there are different ways to skin this campaign.
Absolutely. Yes. Would, would either, would you like to talk about, uh, Mayor Cohen? Would you like to talk about pre-K? The possibility?
Please. Um, Eric, if you'll tell us how many other cities have this kind of program, I'd like to know. I, I've never heard about it.
New York City.
Thank you. That, that's the point. That is exactly the point. New York City's in shambles. And, and I think that schools should be in schools. Cities should be in cities. Neither the twain shall mix. It's a, it's almost a separation of church and state. The city board should be the city, and the school board should be the school board. It, it's just ridiculous to spend a million or five million, if we get more people involved in there, dollars a year, not just once a year. And what about all the people who don't want to go to public school and want vouchers? Then you have to give them money. And it just spirals out of control, and our taxes go up.
Well, you jumped way into the future there. Mr. Carr, do you have any comment on that idea of pre-K?
Yes, I think that, uh, part of what makes Beechwood so great is that it is forward-looking, and it is progressive, and it does at least consider these, uh, kinds of proposals. I join with, uh, Alec and Eric in saying that it's definitely worth discussing and worth considering. You might already be aware that there's a significant push at the federal level to at least fund pre-K education either universally or on various limited terms with needs testing. There's already a county program to subsidize tuition to pre-K education. I think there is a smart way, if the proposal is even viable to begin with in terms of the community support for the council. I think there is a way to make the, uh, to make the math work and to make the services balance with the city's appetite for increased costs and increased, uh, student capacity. But part of our job on council will be to explore all those factors, to take the community's temperature, to take the council's temperature, and understand the ramifications to five, 10, 20, 30 years down the road, and try to analyze that and use our best judgment. And I have that kind of experience.
Okay, I have to, because we're running long, I'm gonna cut you guys to 30 seconds and just answer the question. You know, like, you know, real, real quick rounds. Um, and I'll tell you some of the other subjects that have come up. And if you don't want to answer a particular question, you don't have to. Senior transportation. Someone has written in wanting to know if there is a way to get more transportation available for seniors to, um, help them get out at night to get to doctor appointments. Uh, I'm not aware of what you do here. Go ahead, you want to go first, George?
Uh, sure. There is an existing program that assists seniors in the city of Beechwood. Because of citizen concerns over cost, it is, uh, to some extent, limited in scope by age and by other factors. Uh, I'd like to see that expand, but of course, we need to be sensitive to the cost and the community appetite for those kinds of services. But I do think it does help the city differentiate itself from other, uh, top-level communities on the east side.
Okay. Anyone else on that subject? Go ahead.
So...
Senior transportation?
Yes. No. Our community services department has always been one of the, the strongest parts of our city. And we're blessed that Karen Carden was here for years leading it, and now Derek Schroeder is here leading it. And those are two amazing professionals. So, um, uh, the program should absolutely continue, and as far as expanding it, something that should be worth considering. I, I have never heard that before, that it should be, that residents have a desire for it to expand. But it should be something that's discussed, and again, the cost could be an issue, but, um, Derek Schroeder can certainly look into that, and I, I trust.
I should tell this person to give him a call, huh? The one who wrote in the question? I'm gonna move on to Zygl Drive. Uh, there's an apartment complex there people are concerned about. This would be around the corner from Beechwood Place. They, whoever this person is is very concerned about property deterioration, trash control. Common areas are a problem. Do you work with the owner of that? Go ahead, you may go ahead.
So, I've had several calls from people who live in the, in the apartment building you're referring to. And what we do when we hear about those sort of things is we investigate. The building department goes out. The building department is responsible for code enforcement. They are responsible for identifying what sort of issues are happening, and then for dealing with them. And if it does spin out of control, then it rises to the level of the city administration and city council. And we work with it, we deal with it.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, or, Mr. Mince, you want to talk about any of those at all? I can move on to another subject. And I'm gonna be bringing up a couple of these subjects with the mayoral candidates. GE Current moving to Beechwood. There, one of the people who wrote in was very concerned about how this hurt East Cleveland. Could you talk a little bit, or any of you, we do have time if you all want to respond to this, about how Beechwood came to take that section of the GE? You know, it broke into two, and then you took GE Current here. How did, how did this work out? And you, is there... I, I don't know what, how Beechwood would feel, but there's certainly been discussion across the county about one community taking the assets of another. Okay, we'll start at that end, we'll come down this way.
Okay. So, there's an anti-poaching agreement that all the communities in Puyallup County have, and Beechwood certainly adheres to that strictly. And in this case, although I wasn't personally in on the initial call or the initial meetings, I know we don't poach. And GE Current came to Beechwood and asked us if we would be interested in them relocating here. And like any good, uh, administration, the mayor, his economic development team said, "Sure, let's talk." And, uh, obviously, they're, they're moving here, and that's great for the city of Beechwood. And we were aggressive, intentionally so, in our economic development sense, because we want to continue to attract more companies to Beechwood.
Yes, Mr. Mince, want to talk about that at all?
And I think our economic development needs to be aggressive so that we can attract, uh, new business.
So the poaching? Poaching is the city going out and aggressively seeking a business to move in. Okay, that didn't happen?
No, it didn't. Under the terms of the anti-poaching agreement, as a matter of fact, when, when an organization comes to us or another community, I'm pretty sure we need to notify the community that it's coming from in order to make sure that they get in a fair shape. It's unfortunate that Current left East Cleveland. East Cleveland is struggling, clearly, we all know this. But as far as I understand, Current was leaving East Cleveland no matter what. The fact that they came to us is, is a credit to Beechwood and a credit to our economic development team. But there was, I don't think, any way for them to remain in East Cleveland. They needed to leave Hill Park.
Yes. Now GE Lighting remains there. And, I mean, I had a, you know, look at the, 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 GE, but it's not owned by GE anymore.
Yes, so GE, briefly, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
GE sold off their lighting division. They split it into two. There's, there's commercial lighting and residential lighting. Commercial lighting is what is now called GE Current and Fourth Company, I think. There's a, it's a long name.
Daintree.
It's not GE, sorry. Daintree. They're not a, they're not a unit of GE anymore. They're entitled to use the name for a little while for brand recognition.
Oh.
I don't remember what they called the, um, uh, the, the, the residential lighting segment, but that's still there and a new segment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cohen?
And if, there were...
Let me go back to Mr. Mince, I did let you finish.
So there were a lot of incentives and options that the city is offering to attract new business. And in doing so... new business, and in doing so, that was one of those areas where they did work with the schools. A lot of times when these new businesses are coming in, there are incentives to bring them to Beechwood versus another even, and sometimes with those incentives, what ends up happening is it ends up hurting the schools regarding tax dollars. So the city and the schools, that's been one area where they have worked together so that, so that everyone wins in the long run.
Good. Mr. Cohen? Then we're gonna wind up with final statements. Go ahead.
Before I opened my steel company, I was very involved in real estate, real estate accounting, large, small companies like GE, I worked for them for quite some time, and I can tell you that, I'm sorry for East Cleveland, East Cleveland is a war zone, and anybody who leaves there is in better shape, and hurrah for the council that brought GE Current to Beechwood, we need more of that, we need not to poach them, but to give them very good incentives, and will it hurt the school? An empty building hurts the school, a full one with great payroll taxes never hurts the school.
Mr. Carr? I think the best way to add to that conversation is to say that I'm a big believer in regionalism. I support the anti-poaching agreement, and of course, the city complied with it strictly, and I think that economic incentives are a sensible tool for business attraction and business development that the city has had history of using wisely. A lot of my developer clients really respect the city of Beechwood and their business development choices, and have a high opinion that when Beechwood takes the deal seriously and is motivated to grant incentives, that the deal is definitely worthwhile, and I'll continue to support those policies when I'm elected to council.
We do have a question about regionalism on vote 411, which all the candidates, except Mr. Minz, has not replied to vote 411, but he's going to do that tonight. Now, posing statements because we have to move on to the mayoral race, if there's any subject that you, that I haven't asked you about, and I know there's many, including how council members get along with each other, how are you gonna work on that over the coming four years, that sort of thing, you don't have to touch on that, but let's just close, you can each have less than a minute and a half for that statement, and then we'll get the mayoral candidates up here. Is that all right? Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
I started the last one.
You started, let's go to Ben and Mr. Sinnenberg. Could you, we're having a little problem with the sound, so I've been asked, either remove your mask or move the mic closer to your mouth, because they're not having any trouble hearing me.
As I said earlier, it has been an honor to be a part of the Beechwood team over the last four years, and work with my colleagues on council and the administration to move Beechwood forward, and we have. Beechwood is better now than ever, I'll argue that all day with anybody. One of the things I'm running on is vision, and that includes public-private partnerships, grant money, getting state and federal money, and getting private donations from community members who are willing and able to give us money to do great things in Beechwood in the future. That's where my vision is. I'm most passionate about our community services and our recreation, and that's where I've led over the last four years. Community gardens, the outdoor fitness equipment that we're gonna be installing in the spring, pickleball courts, hopefully, new playgrounds, a possible skateboard park, there are great things, a possible pedestrian bridge from the Beechwood Place property over to Acacia to tie that in. These are all things I'm advocating for and will continue to advocate for. The housing along Chagrin Boulevard, so we can get more residents, because I believe we still have a, have room here to grow, and more people want to move to Beechwood. So, again, I'm running on my passion for Beechwood, my vision for the future, and my commitment to the community, and I would appreciate your vote anytime you vote between now and November 2nd, thank you.
Yes, you can vote now, that's right. Mr. Minz?
So, like all residents, my wife and I chose to raise our family in Beechwood. My daughter is fifteen, my son is thirteen, and we chose it because of the nurturing environment, the amazing city programs and city services, and outstanding schools. I am committed to our city and our residents, and to assure that our resources remain superior and outstanding. I welcome your thoughts and ideas on how you can make, how we can work together to make Beechwood better. I believe in our city, our schools, and our community, and I'm asking for your vote in the upcoming election to secure a positive future for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Isaacson?
Tonight, you've heard many of us talk about what we're gonna do for our city. I've told you about my vision for Beechwood's future, investing in our community, improving safety, and improving safety and security, and more. Beechwood is strong and vibrant, with a growing population and a sound financial base. I've talked to our neighbors, and I keep hearing the same thing, Beechwood is doing well, and I'm happy with the way things are going here. Does that mean things are perfect? Of course not. Is there room for improvement? Of course there is. Does that require radical change? No. This isn't an easy job, you need to invest time and effort to understand how to be a member of city council. We need leaders who know our city and who've made an effort to learn how things work. I've spent eight years on city council, learning about and helping to lead our city. I have a proven track record as a thoughtful, independent, and positive leader who serves our community and gets things done without trouble. I have a vision that will keep our community moving in the direction we all want. Tonight, I'm asking for your help to continue that mission, I'm asking for you to vote for me, Alec Isaacson, for city council. If you wanna hear more from me, you can contact me via my website, positivelybeechwood.com. I am Alec Isaacson, and I am Positively Beechwood.
Thank you. Mayor Cohen?
These gentlemen are exquisite in how they speak to the audience, I cannot, I can't beat them. I can only tell you like this, I'm a common sense guy, bread and butter, meat and potatoes before an amphitheater, bread and butter before we bring schools and cities together and spend millions of dollars. Beechwood is Beechwood because it was founded on very well-planned, commercial, industrial areas, and that's what gives us the freedom to do what we do, to give the services that we give, bar none, we have, if not the greatest, one of the greatest service departments, fire departments, Beechwood police departments, there is in the country, and that is because we have good commerce. And everybody wants all these great things and services, and we want to help the elderly and help this one, help that one, there's gotta be the money behind it. Number one, spend it wisely. Number two, attract and maintain good businesses. In Beechwood Place, on Cumber Park, Science Park, Chagrin, that's our bread and butter. If we don't do it, we will raise taxes and become second rate. Thank you, Mayor Cohen, for council.
Thank you. And George Carr?
Thank you all for listening, I hope our discussion's been illuminating to you, and thanks again to our hosts and sponsors. You've heard some of the issues confronting Beechwood, and the work of a city council person in Beechwood is not an easy job. I have the experience and the skills and the temperament to help lead this city, more so than any of my competitors. I have not yet served on city council, but I have strong and trusted relationships with my fellow politicians, with my fellow residents, with my fellow parents, with children in the schools, and I'm confident that I can help forge solutions to these complex problems, I can help attract businesses like those I've represented over the past twenty-three years to Beechwood and to expand in Beechwood, and I'm confident that we can address some of the unique challenges that Beechwood faces. Beechwood has many attributes, many wonderful things about it, you've heard some statistics from our school board debating about the strong diversity in Beechwood, both along racial and income lines, along any number of metrics. You've heard statistics from the recent census talking about how Beechwood has a record-high number of people who speak a non-English language at home. Those are fascinating social trends, and Beechwood is not standing still. We cannot live with static social policies, static economic policies, and expecting the activities of the past to simply produce new results. We must innovate, we must stay on the front edge, we must keep Beechwood in the front rank of eastside suburban communities, and I would appreciate your support to help move that process along. A vote for George Carr is a vote for continued incremental and stable change in the city of Beechwood. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I just wanna make sure that voters understand that they're voting for three of you, three candidates, you can vote for up to three candidates on your ballot. Thank you very much, we're gonna clear the table and move on to the next round.